We just have Commissioner Johnson, one of the leaders of the county.
Say a bow please.
As possible, we just thank you again for this great county, Lord, and thank you for this Lord. We just thank you for the great people in this county, Lord, that we represent. And maybe with our policemen, we're with our firemen, and our soldiers, Lord, as they protect us and watch over us, and maybe with the people, maybe it does, if we make the decision for the county to not be.
Amen.
Amen. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, we need to add to the agenda the recognition of Heritage High School football team.
Softball.
The appointment of Region One EMS Council, Advisory Council, and also on our executive session, add real estate. At this time, do I have the motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, before we go any further, I'd like to ask a special guest.
Certainly do, certainly do.
Football team, it sounds like.
Hey, they're better at football than you.
That's true. At this time, Mr. Chairman, I would like to introduce Coach Kenner Moore and the 2018 Heritage Softball team, and ask if they come forward. Mr. Chairman, some of Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners, I'd just like to read off some of their accomplishments. Of course, they are the 1918 GHSA Class Four State Champions this year. That's a title they repeat from last year. They did that with a record of twenty-five and six, and they historyed ten all record through the playoffs, unbeaten, longest win streak in ten years. They're back-to-back AAA Region Champions, and this year's senior class record over the last four years is hundred-and-one to thirty-six. Wow. Nice. We had Region Pitcher of the Year, Rachel Gibson, three first-team All-Region players, Katie Proctor, Carmen Galler, Reagan Arman, and three second-team All-Region players, Riley Covinda, Bailey Crystal, and Zoe Ryan. Mr. Chairman, the 2018 Heritage Football Team.
(Applause).
Maybe it's the clutch. 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 Ready? Thank you all. (Applause). Congratulations. At this time, moving on, as everybody had a chance to look at minutes from the last meeting, I have so glad to have a question. All in favor of approving minutes?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Aye.
Now we open up for appearance.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Bill Williams, and I live in this county. And I would like to talk to y'all tonight about this T-SLOSS tax that was in the paper yesterday. Actually, the only thing we knew about it was y'all had discussed roads. By the way, y'all are all road commissioners, whether you know it or not, according to the Carl Benz Institute. And I know that these roads didn't get this way overnight, and I think everyone of you are responsible. This has been coming out for a long time. If this T-SLOSS is voted in, and we bring in like three million dollars a year, probably according to the DMT, that will resurface like what, twelve to fourteen miles, more or less, of roads? If you do that, what is going to happen to the three million dollars that we're going to be keeping? Have y'all found something else to use that money for? Because it makes sense if we're going to be paying a tax that's going to bring in three million dollars, and you're only supposed to resurface bridges, seaports, bicycle paths, it's all in here? Then who is going to be the judge of where this money goes and what bit is built? Are y'all the ones who are inside our road department going to enter into this? Because now, this is going to be a brand-new tax, and don't even get me a bid down here because we may start coming in. We're going to keep up with every penny because these things are strictly for roads and things like that. You can't just use this money for anything you want to. So I want y'all to know that we're kind of opposed to no more exposure than this tax has had. And I read about the intergovernmental agreements in here. Hey, wait, Board of Labor voted to join our clinic, and nobody has an intergovernmental agreement. And there is a rate in here for not having one of those agreements. So I would suggest y'all start doing, because I called the election board today, and they're going to work up a special election. Because I know you're not a question answering service here, but the thing is, don't you all have to vote on money for special elections because it costs money? And we just like y'all be a little more forward with what's going on here. Thank you very much.
Do you have a question, please? Sorry. Okay, George Bader Spie, District Four. Last meeting, I listened to Mrs. Vaughn's report on the clinic, did a good job. However, her numbers were totally off what we were told this time last year when the clinic was set up. Of course, originally it was set up to be with Board Ringo Telephone Company, and the county, in their wisdom, decided to go along because we have a lot more money to waste than Ringo Telephone Company does. But the figures were given last year was closer to a half million, over four hundred thousand, that was, to three hundred thousand. So, and also, according to the county's numbers, for the first six months last year, when it first opened this time last year, the number of attendees was six hundred for this first six months. And you're trying to tell me it was nine hundred during the summer? I don't think that's right, and I don't believe it. And I hope, I hope you all don't think that we believe it. And why you can't just admit that you made a mistake and you're wasting taxpayers' money instead of using it somewhere decent? And I wish somebody on the, in the county government has connections with Domino's Pizza, where we could get the Domino's Pizza truck to repair our potholes, because it seems like that's the only way we'll be able to get them fixed. Thank you.
Do you have a question, please? Second.
All in favor of approving? Say aye.
Aye.
Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions? This is the second year of this, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have to go by the station three years in the last four weeks. We've got a big three of them. Giving up the station, we don't. Everybody's saying there's Dale and our station.
Bobby didn't. Yeah, I didn't want to fight with that.
I did. Is that for? Can you give the grant for?
Uh, I have.
Right, and it does look good because it's got three. You should say sorry for that.
This. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Keep that good work. Do you have a question?
Commissioner, Commissioners, good afternoon. We were recipients of the Tennessee American Water Grant, and we're asking you to amend the budget for five hundred dollars so we can take the grant and purchase what we had purchased last year. And this is a device teaching the community CPR. It stops the, eliminates the body fluids from the carrier to the person, or the person conducting CPR to the patient itself. And they cost two hundred, right about five hundred bucks. And last year, we conducted several CPR classes and certified two-hundred-and-eighty-three citizens to CPR. And we gave out over two hundred of these. So this is something that they can keep in their vehicle, keep it at work, or someplace readily accessible, carries in the pocketbook, something you can keep with you all the time to hopefully, you won't have to use it, but if you do, I think it's nice. There's one thing that's proven that over the years, one thing people are reluctant to do CPR, mouth-to-mouth, on someone they don't know, mainly the mouth-to-mouth, so this is, this is a nice rule too, to help, help someone from catching something. So anyway, we're asking for, to accept the grant for five hundred bucks, and then to the final budget.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Do you have any questions?
I have to go by the station three years in the last four weeks. We've got a big three of them. Giving up the station, we don't. Everybody's saying there's Dale and our station.
Bobby didn't. Yeah, I didn't want to fight with that.
I did. Is that for?
Can you give the grant for?
Uh, I have.
Right, and it does look good because it's got three. You should say sorry for that.
This. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We don't carry one end of your purse, do you? Sorry. We don't carry one end of your purse, do you?
What else? I still listen to this one.
Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, good evening. I would like to present, this is a letter requesting the endorsement of the, of Cote d'Arc County for the City of Ringo's Chief Richard Taylor Nature Trail. They're actually applying for a grant for the trail in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars, and they're requesting assistance from Cote d'Arc County to provide labor and equipment to assist in grading of a parking lot, and to the value of two thousand dollars. So, we just asked you to ratify the letter of support for the trail grant.
Oh, I'll say. And this is the matching grant of two thousand, and I have.
Yes, just an odd one. That's exactly right.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Kenny?
Okay. I'm here to propose, for the new proposed paid time off policy. The proposal to change the county's current vacation sick-time policies to a paid time off policy. This change will allow county employees the opportunity to use time away from work as they choose. They will not have to report whether their time off is vacation time or sick time. The new policy combines the current vacation and sick time allowed into one bank of paid time allowed. The new policy includes a new level of years of employment, which is the six to ten years of employment. It is also being proposed to department directors to receive forty hours of paid time off in addition to the regular paid time off accrual rates as listed in the accrual rate table in the policy.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I got a question, sir. Before I hit this. Okay, now, this is going to be, like you say, this is going to add some, up the boot some vacation hours for everybody to get quicker for six years to ten.
Yes, that's the only level we can add.
Yeah. And then also adding accrual time and stuff like we've added for the different hours people work.
Yes, yes, yes. We are adding levels for nine-on-one and part forment.
You have to give us a list, but right now, this just affects the county, and it doesn't do with the other ladies and officials.
Okay.
But they go with their own policies.
Right, so the elected officials do not follow the Board of Commissioners' policies. Okay, so this does not apply to them. Okay, we, in fact, we don't even have their schedule of vacation time or sick time.
This is just to enable the following.
Yes, under Board Commissioners.
Fire chief, and the head of the particular office.
Yes, they have their own policies.
So this adds nothing to the other.
No, sir, it's not.
Technically, it don't add nothing to the vote, but it's already been agreed in. Like you said, if you were more careful, if we were done with forty hours, we're saying a lot of these, what we call salary people are working their extra hours and stuff like this, and this is just to help them catch up some of the hours that we feel like they're working at.
Yes, it was proposed that your department directors that are considered twenty-four-seven, basically to answer their phone whether they're at work or not, holidays, vacations, whatever, those are the department directors that would be eligible for the forty hours.
And it seems to be a lot of the county's, to the branch.
Yes, we've done, we've done research on that too. And ultimately, even though we added that one level, ultimately, when you add the vacation and the sick time that we are currently receiving, we're not at the bottom line, we are not getting any more except for the department.
It is just a hundred. This is not included in the Gending權 Act, correct?
No.
Just to make sure everybody understands, since it's a budget, I guess all the money is due to the budget.
No, 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 we're not, not to the budget at all. No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I have the proposed approval of budget amendment one for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty nineteen. A budget amendment is required to mean changing governmental expenses and needs which have arisen during the current fiscal year. General fund expenditures, we have an increase in juvenile court, court-appointed attorneys of forty-five thousand. Nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars of that is due to an increase in the contract, and the balance is due to volume of cases. We have reduction in operating transfers out to Cote d'Arc County Fire and Rescue in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars due to an increase in insurance premium tax revenue of two hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars, partially offset by an increase in contract labor expenditures of a hundred and thirty-five thousand to provide for Board of Labor contract for the full year. The offset to the increase in juvenile court expenditures and reduction in operating transfers out resulted in a favorable adjustment of seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars to the reserve account with zero net change to the general fund budgeted expenditures. And other governmental funds, Cote d'Arc County Fire and Rescue, we received more revenue than previously anticipated from the insurance premium tax, therefore reducing the funds needed to be budgeted as an operating transfer from the general fund. The reduction was partially offset due to an increase in contract labor to provide for the contract for Board of Labor for a full year in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand. This resulted in an increase of a hundred and thirty-five thousand in revenue with an offsetting increase in expenditures. And Finance Department is recommending the grant.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I got a question, sir. Before I hit this. Okay, now, this is going to be, like you say, this is going to add some, up the boot some vacation hours for everybody to get quicker for six years to ten.
Yes, that's the only level we can add.
Yeah, and then also adding accrual time and stuff like we've added for the different hours people work.
Yes, 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 we are adding levels for nine-on-one and part forment.
You have to give us a list, but right now, this just affects the county, and it doesn't do with the other ladies and officials.
Okay.
But they go with their own policies.
Right, so the elected officials do not follow the Board of Commissioners' policies. Okay, so this does not apply to them. Okay, we, in fact, we don't even have their schedule of vacation time or sick time.
This is just to enable the following.
Yes, under Board Commissioners.
Fire chief, and the head of the particular office.
Yes, they have their own policies.
So this adds nothing to the other.
No, sir, it's not.
And technically, it don't add nothing to the vote, but it's already been agreed in. Like you said, if you were more careful, if we were done with forty hours, we're saying a lot of these, what we call salary people are working their extra hours and stuff like this, and this is just to help them catch up some of the hours that we feel like they're working at.
Yes, it was proposed that your department directors that are considered twenty-four-seven, basically to answer their phone whether they're at work or not, holidays, vacations, whatever, those are the department directors that would be eligible for the forty hours.
And it seems to be a lot of the county's, to the branch.
Yes, we've done, we've done research on that too. And ultimately, even though we added that one level, ultimately, when you add the vacation and the sick time that we are currently receiving, we're not at the bottom line, we are not getting any more except for the department.
It is just a hundred. This is not included in the Gending權 Act, correct?
No.
(Laughter). Just to make sure everybody understands, since it's a budget, I guess all the money is due to the budget.
No, 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 we're not, not to the budget at all. No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I have the proposed approval of budget amendment one for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty nineteen. A budget amendment is required to mean changing governmental expenses and needs which have arisen during the current fiscal year. General fund expenditures, we have an increase in juvenile court, court-appointed attorneys of forty-five thousand. Nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars of that is due to an increase in the contract, and the balance is due to volume of cases. We have reduction in operating transfers out to Cote d'Arc County Fire and Rescue in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars due to an increase in insurance premium tax revenue of two hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars, partially offset by an increase in contract labor expenditures of a hundred and thirty-five thousand to provide for Board of Labor contract for the full year. The offset to the increase in juvenile court expenditures and reduction in operating transfers out resulted in a favorable adjustment of seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars to the reserve account with zero net change to the general fund budgeted expenditures. And other governmental funds, Cote d'Arc County Fire and Rescue, we received more revenue than previously anticipated from the insurance premium tax, therefore reducing the funds needed to be budgeted as an operating transfer from the general fund. The reduction was partially offset due to an increase in contract labor to provide for the contract for Board of Labor for a full year in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand. This resulted in an increase of a hundred and thirty-five thousand in revenue with an offsetting increase in expenditures. And Finance Department is recommending the grant.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Do you have any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you have a score, please?
Yeah, thank you. A minute.
Warn it.
I have the fiscal year twenty nineteen revenue report for the first month ended October. Lost receipts for the first month of fiscal year twenty nineteen exceeded the budget twenty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, or three point nine eight percent, and exceeded the same month period actuals for prior year, eighteen thousand, thirty-three dollars, or three point oh five percent. Cumulative lost receipts for the most recent twelve-month period exceeded the prior twelve-month period, three hundred and forty-two thousand and thirty-three dollars, or four point nine four percent. The spot receipts for the fifty-one-month period of the twenty-fourteen spot cycle were forty-two million, seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars, or eighty-two point three seven percent of budget. Spot receipts for the most recent twelve months exceeded the prior twelve months, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, sixty-six dollars, or four point nine four percent. The current month exceeded the same period prior year, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars, or two point nine one percent.
At this time, we have no whole business or new business here.
Mr. Chairman, it is time to reappoint our representative to Region One EMS. Our current representative, whose term is expiring, is Steve Quinn. Steve is also the only qualified applicant for this position. If we don't, we have to reappoint, it does not automatically renew.
Do you have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you have any Commissioner comments?
I would like to say, I'm committed to all the residents that's registered voters in Cote d'Arc County. I heard out of early voting, and all this has, several records of, you know, everybody who's registered, so, 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 please, yeah. (Inaudible). And on this, I would like to make a note about the T-SLOSS, that she might prove we realize that, you know, this is for the road and stuff, and they're playing, we cannot use this for, doesn't matter the road. And yes, there will be some meetings that we will be having, here at the full bond about it, to explain more about it, so, you know, it is coming, it is not being here for, but hopefully I answered more questions about the vacation league and stuff like that.
Every, every meeting we've had about the T-SLOSS, has been all of a meeting, and everybody has been invited to. It's the same way we have, I just, we don't do anything close to it. We had a meeting yesterday with the U.C. on twelve, and I have a presence. Everybody's up. Ms. Yen?
Well, I like to, everybody's hearing the softball, two years in a row, fantastic accomplishment. I'm going to go after it anyway. Congratulations to your softball, and your baseball.
No, I'd add two, I don't even put it there, but I know it's going to walk again, but we were leading softball, also on the state of the earth region, so we had two from this area.
If there's nothing else, at this time, go into executive session for legal personnel and articles and all.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes?
Fisher Cutler?
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
All in executive session. All in favor of executive session?
All in.
All in favor of coming out of executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Exactly, we have one out of our own station, Chad Young.
Mr. Chairman and Board, back in October of last year, an individual filed a complaint with the Department of Housing and Urban Development saying he felt like that he was discriminated against prior zoning department where he was housing foster helps in residential neighborhood. We went, the county denies these allegations. Honestly, our position is that if the individual had been forthcoming about what he used the property for, probably never would have gotten this hold. But to resolve the complaint, the Department of Housing and Urban Development has proposed that we enter into what's called a voluntary compliance agreement. We don't admit that we did anything wrong, in fact, we deny. But we do agree that we will do some internal and external training, which is never a bad idea, on federal HUD and housing discrimination guidelines, so that we're up to date on that. Essentially, that's what the agreement provides. And we will recommend that this agreement be approved. And that we also agree to designate a county employee as a contact person in the event the county has, the county resident has a housing discrimination complaint. We recommend that the agreement be approved and that you authorize the county manager to designate the county employee to be the liaison for speaking how that.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. Got any questions for Chad? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chad. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor of adjourn, say aye.
Aye.